From what I understand, or we understand the goal from the commissioners, I understand that this, we understand that there's apparently one big push which has to do with mass development. However, even to address that, there has to be a foundation, and at this point, there is none. We haven't received the commission's mission, vision, strategic plan, and we certainly do not see any significant committee input, or I should say, citizen input. And so it really leaves us to where we feel this is a setup for failure, that it's not efficient, and then perhaps it's not meeting the actual objective, or the mission, or the vision of the City of Kingsbury. So we're not pursuing any further until we get some feedback from y'all, and where that needs to go, or not at all. I will say that in the, excuse me, in the September Committee's report, it outlines wide plan, gives very logistical reasons to plan. It also lays out the dangers of ad hoc ordinances, which I understand that that is the big push, maybe not from a commission, but from individuals. And so I want to make sure that that gets clarified and leveled out, and make sure we have solid foundation moving forward. I believe I can speak on behalf of the committee. We've done a lot of work to provide this, and right now, we really feel it was a waste of time. So this is kind of where we stand regarding that. But we wait to hear from you after digesting the Kingsbury drafted comprehensive plans and open framework. We've also provided the supporting documentation, or support, from the rural Texas, small Texas cities, about comprehensive planning. And we also gave out within the comprehensive plan, or real details as far as how do we get the community input. I would dare say that that would be a good strategy for the commission to use to get the rest of the City of Kingsbury involved, as becoming part of the City of Kingsbury, if that's the goal. Again, with the Swiss cheese holes that makes up Kingsbury, any ordinances that blatantly ad hoc, not only open you up liability-wise, but then they also, you have no jurisdiction, so it doesn't make sense. And so this is kind of where we are, we would like to hear back from the commission. Our third point, which is, well, that was the third point, was jurisdiction with the city of Kingsbury. We discussed those concerns during our meeting in October 10th. And so we're wanting to bring in those concerns up to today, in this meeting. All the information, research, support documentation is not only been provided to the commission via email every month, but then it's also on the Kingsbury General Discussion Board. And so it's there for everyone to take a look at, and so we wait to hear from this body before we move forward.
Frank, I think I messaged you on the message board, or I know I did. The framework, is it beyond that kind of outline that you had as text inside one of the messages on the message board? So it's beyond that, right?
Yes, those are merely immediate events and our agenda. And then the actual support, and actual committee reports are submitted every month to the city.
And I scoured my emails looking for what I know, because I get the P&amp;Z, but I scoured it looking for that, and so I requested if you would send that.
So I did send it specifically to you, specifically the September, that actually has the original committee report, as well as all the support documentation. And I did that last week on Tuesday evening.
No, I just, yeah, I just asked you like yesterday. Because I scoured, I scoured my emails looking for it, and I'm like...
It would come directly from my...
Okay, and so what is your email? Let me look, I'll look it up by that.
My first name underscored last name at popmail.com.
Okay, I got it. I will find it. You know how to, when you have like upteen email accounts. And I knew which one you were sending it to, but I just went ahead and looked for them all, and still wasn't doing any good.
The check is in the mail.
The check is in the mail. Also, I had mentioned, I think, to Jessica about having a workshop regarding the P&amp;Z information. I'm only on page like 20 of that, it's 62 pages.
So that document is the rural campaign, that's going to come from the state of Texas, and that's the guide in order to help. What you're really gonna, and that, what you're really gonna want to look at is this here, the scope and framework, which is only, how many pages is that? I didn't number the pages. 14 pages.
Okay, I'm all over it.
And that was emailed to us?
Yes, that was back in September. I can resend it out. That also included the support doc, attachments of the rural Texas, small, small and town guidance. And that comes from the state of Texas directly, as a training guide. And that's what formulated this. I did all that work, and that 60 some odd pages, almost 70 document, and then I created this. Yes. So there was a lot of education and research, and I've done a lot of time, I've given a lot of time. And so have the other committee members, and we really would like some feedback.
And so that's where I was asking for a workshop, so we could review.
Yeah, I think also it might be wise to go back to our original mission statement, because we are a liberty city, low regulation, low taxation, so zoning is not really part of our thing, so we might look at that too.
Listen, I'd like to go back, if y'all don't mind, now to the unsureness of what we asked for, and what y'all think y'all are asked, and what y'all are trying to revise, and what we're looking for. I don't think, I don't know if, I don't, I don't know. I looked for the letter I sent out to everybody, gay people. And I don't think it asked for what you're providing. But I don't know that that's not what the commission has asked for, as a whole, or if y'all interpreted it as that way. I'm not sure. I mean, I was, personally, I thought we were asking for, as asking public, but we wanted a committee with some structure behind it, to let us know what you wanted in this community. If you were aware that the changes were happening, and I'm assuming most everybody is, but maybe not. You know, and if you're totally happy with the way things are, and don't see need for any kind of action whatsoever, that's fine. If there's something specific that you think needs to be done or addressed, that's what I wanted to know.
So I think the deal was, the study was limited investment property mass development. That's the message that I got, and that's the message that this committee got. Now, if you're going to do a simple ordinance, just to specifically target us, this is the...
No, that is not...
That's what I'm saying, that's the wrong way to do it. And in order to do it correctly, and sustainable, and truly holistic, you're gonna want to go this route. It's a bit larger than what you're wanting, but it does cover what we need. And it clearly puts out to get the rest of the citizens into it. But even before that, there's not enough, just looking at the map, you've got such holes, that it would, that this really doesn't even matter. And so that's what our discussion was on last Tuesday, was you don't need a committee for that. You don't, this committee doesn't need to exist. Because there's not a foundation in order to do what we seek and we do, because of the fact you do not have ID, the City of Kingsbury does not have the jurisdiction.
But what I was trying, we got caught unawares once before. I was just trying to put something out there, so we don't get caught again.
That's under, that's under, that's under... But when you look at... I have a very tiny version. What are we, what are we in control of?
Very, very little.
Very little. So the planning and the zoning is not going to do...
Okay, you're planning and zoning for Metropolis, we don't have that.
No, that's, no, that's not the thing. The idea was right to keep big money investment properties?
Not from my end. I don't know about the rest of the, you know, but for me, no.
I guess I don't understand it either.
We just wanted, like, kind of what Elena was saying. I mean, we wanted that structure in place, so that we are not caught...
Having retroactive, or like the City of Staples, they didn't have any... And now at the last minute, they were able to put in an ordinance. But in order to do that, they had to backtrack their steps. Now, what I'm going to tell you is that they need to be careful, because moving forward, they need to make sure they have a full comprehensive planning and zoning, and not just a single ordinance. Because the state is going to come after them.
As a Class C city, I don't know if we have authority to do very much in the way of planning or zoning, or...
Agreed, that's my point.
All right, yes, but from my point of view, what I'm, what I was looking for, what I was hoping to find, was people who would be involved, and would tell us what they wanted out of the place they're living in. It's very hard to get people to stand up and say, "Oh my God, we gotta do something about this", until their house is on fire, then all of a sudden, it becomes very important, you know? But to even just look ahead just a little bit, and say, you know, I don't think I, you know, I like that.
And so with, and so Frank, with that, it's called Planning the Plan. And in here, it's four, five, six strategy steps to get the citizens of Kingsbury involved for that input, to get them to come to the table.
So your input to me, I don't know about the commission, to me as a commissioner, what do we need to plan for? What do y'all want to happen? I'm not asking if we can do it, if it's legal, or if it's justified, or if it's the right thing.
That's what we're asking the city commission. You have the authority, and I do not.
I think we're at a stalemate, because what Frank is saying, we serve you, you guys are the public, we want your opinion, we are a liberty city, therefore, we are not opinionated. We're not supposed to be opinionated politicians, we're supposed to be purely public servants. And what you guys are saying back to us is, "Well, you guys, we're the ones who need to come up with something."
Yeah, I don't want to, personally, personally, planning and zoning. I cannot tell my neighbor what he can or can't do on his property with his property.
Yeah, that's how I feel.
If he wants to build a junkyard, or a hall, whatever.
If you implement a true P&amp;Z, then that's what's going to happen. There is that type of regulation.
Okay, there's another person on line, "I don't want to implement a new P&amp;Z. If we implement a P&amp;Z, I want it to be ours. I don't want it to be a new one, or to be ours. I don't want it to be like Staples, and San Marcos, Austin."
Agreed.
No, us, individuals specifically for us.
Please read this. This is what I provided the commission.
Well, I've been reading this, and I'm not, I'm not trying to argument, be argumented, like you said.
You don't have to like it, but it is a strategy of something, it's natural outline, and this is what, that's what...
I understand it.
Is needed, to determine if this is, if this committee is going to continue.
Okay.
So do you think the workshop is...
I don't know.
Would be effective?
Do they think it'd be effective? Do you, is it something that you think would be effective? You think it'd be of any value?
I think that we need, I does, I do, I do think it would be of value in order to discuss, I mean, because we can't discuss in here effectively what has been, you know, put forth by the, by the committee. So I wanted to have a, just a workshop to kind of review, and see, kind of like if we could get on the same page between us, with the committee, the committee with us, that.
I don't want to be on two different pages with these people and us.
Right.
I would like to be on the same page.
The question I have, now if I can say this, what Elena mentioned earlier, maybe it is not that we are looking for a planning and zoning committee, or planning and zoning. That is a word which is existing, or term which is existing. You probably mean something completely different. You mean not set, planning and zoning. You mean upscaling what we have now. Is that possible? That we are maybe completely misunderstanding what you are asking us to do.
I don't know upscaling.
Yeah, or changing, like, like that, sorry, that email I sent out. Just little ideas, because of the telephone conversations I had with Euro. They sent me out, for every acre you put a house on, they ask you to plant at least two trees. This is the future, it is happening, if we like it or not. Or a little park for kids to play in, you like that a lot, Frank, you told me that. Maybe, so is that what you are looking for? Well, you can, you can do that with everything you are in charge of, which is not much. I mean, everything on that app, which is big, that's it.
I just, at this point, I honestly don't see that there isn't enough justification, even for a P&amp;Z committee period. We can't stop in the subject, and that's the fact that there is no jurisdiction.
Agreed, we cannot call this planning and zoning, because we cannot plan and zone to begin with. You know, when you only have the chance to zone and plan on the left side of the road, if not on the right side, it doesn't do any good.
So to wrap up, to wrap up our report, we have no additional announcements. We look forward to the commissioners' response to the draft, and their additional feedback. And our next meeting will be held Tuesday, 14th of November, 6:30 PM, here, right here at the beautiful Kingsbury Volunteer Park Station.
I'm sorry, repeat that date again?
Tuesday, November 14th.
It's always the Tuesday before the city commission.
Okay.
Subject to any comments, questions, or concerns, that concludes the P&amp;Z committee.
So do you think we should schedule a workshop, an hour?
I think we could do enough, the meeting, and then we all come back in with, I mean, personally, I, again, I don't think we should be zoning Liberty City at all. I don't think that's what it's about. I do, you know, when you said, when you brought Staples in to talk to us, I think that they have a point, which is there are places being overrun by people. They're in a different spot, they probably have different, I mean, our city's weird, in the way it's set up.
Well, I mean, when you're talking zoning, it's not, I just put, you're not saying, okay, you can't do that with your properties. Like, okay, your property's value is, zone for A.
I don't think property should be zoned for anything. I use mine for commercial residential.
It's just, it's just to, then it's just request to change in some, it's not like we're saying, oh, you can't do it.
I don't think that should happen in Liberty City.
The fact that you have to request is problematic to me.
The reason we formed the city was to keep it country. You don't have to do that in the countryside, you don't have to do that to your county. That is not the reason Kingsbury was formed. Kingsbury was formed to keep ourselves safe from Sagan.
That was, that was...
Keep the country, country is what our motto was, it's like...
That's how I understood the commissioners' mission and purpose for forming, to be incorporated. And to go to the P&amp;Z, this is what I'm looking, I don't think you're, you're not ready for this. And this doesn't meet your mission and vision, state and mission and vision of, or the purpose of the commission forming. But I could be wrong, hence why we're asking for that clarification.
Let me offer this up to you, please. We're not ready for that now. But when do you think we might be? I mean, five years ago, I'd have said, 30, 40 years maybe? Today, I would say, maybe five?
I don't know, it also depends on when you can get to jurisdiction of actually having City of Kingsbury.
Well, there's other problems with jurisdiction. But that's, but that's changing too, that's changing too. The ETJ is only, what, 50, 60 years old? There was no ETJ before that, the 60s sometime.
It's a great question. I would love to know what those citizens that live in those areas have to say about it. It's not me.
Until a year ago, a city, a city could forcibly annex you into their city. No questions asked by you, makes no difference what you want.
But that's not how you want Kingsbury to be.
No.
Exactly. So that's why I'm saying, where is your citizen input?
Right here is the first citizen input we've had in a long, long time, all right? Because there's no big issue. There's no, there's no city trying to annex you into their city, or into their ETJ. There's no one coming telling you, "You now have, you now belong to us, and you must do as we say." When that's not happening, when it's not happening right then, nobody got up and voted, nobody came together in a meeting and talked about what we were there doing.
So does it show you?
That if, if, if your yard was not on fire, you're not worried about where the water is.
I don't think that people like on, you know, Sagan's outer loop is FM 2438. It's in their plans, it's in their transportation plan. I don't, nobody on 2438 knows that.
But when it's actually taken out, but into effect September 1st, the citizens of Kingsbury can pull, can make that, make that, put in that paperwork, and pull out of Sagan ETJ like that. Now, it's up to them, and the commission, to do a good enough education of the citizens to get them, if that's what the goal is, to get them to be part of City of Kingsbury. Again, it's, I got no, I got no dog in fight. I got no good dog in this game.
You're not as far away as you think. You're not as far away as you think. I don't think, I don't think you're as far away as you think. I didn't think I was, I didn't think I was this close when I moved out here. We were a long way, because we left for the same reason. And we came all the way out here, and damn, 10 years later, I said, "It's happening again."
It's inevitable, it's inevitable. I think that's one of the biggest first-line statements in the draft. It changes inevitable.
Change, yes, change is, change is.
What are you going to do about it?
I don't want, you know, what are, you know, I, educating, educating the people that live in this area, informing them, raising awareness, getting their feedback and input on things, which is the same thing as meeting at the Red Isle, and H&amp;V, and say, "Oh, how's everything going? Oh, I don't like this, this. Oh, I don't either, you know, but you know what happened to me yesterday, blah, blah, blah." That's exchanging of ideas, and that's reaching a consensus. And it is still, it's a social activity, it's not a legal act, it's social. Everything, everything about humans are social, even the laws are social. But they're, they're social with force. It's not just because it happens because people like this, it's because the people decided this is good, and we, you so, must do it too. It's social. If you want to have an area that has a, a structure that you find pleasing, then that's, you do what you need to do to keep it that way. But there are going to be people that move in that don't care for your idea of what's pleasing, they're going to do things a little different.
So should the, should the focus be on letting more people that incorporated into the city limits are not, letting more people in the Sagan ETJ know that they can get out? What are we doing to let those people know that they can get out of the ETJ?
Well, right now, what are we doing?
I don't know.
I don't know that it's our job to...
Oh, I wanted to make, I'm making it my job. You just say you've got the forms, and the simple instructions to go with it, so I tell everybody where to go get it.
Don't want to go through GTOs and your store. You need to make sure that the people on either side of that road are not in the ETJ.
Yeah, because they could do it as an eminent domain, probably.
That's right.
When we were fighting, when we were fighting for our freedom from Sagan's ETJ, we were going door to door, we were going door to door, talking to neighbors, talking to everybody.
Publishing, newspapers.
There was a lot of talk about not getting shot at the driveway, though. Everyone was like, "How do you go to some store in Texas?"
And then, to get your citizen input.
Ultimately, we had 97 people vote, after all that.
If we have to wait for an emergency, I want to, it'd be nice to have some idea of which way we should run when the emergency finally becomes awareness.
Were you able to talk to folks at the National Night Out about this?
Did we?
Yeah, were you able to? You had mentioned...
I stood up in the display, there were people looking at it, there were people actually reading the whole thing, you know? There was not a great big turnout, like some years, but there were people there.
Maybe we should do another one for Fall Harvest, could be worth it.
Well, I don't know.
I mean, well, what's the message?
Well, yeah, what is the message now?
I mean, I think people should know they can get out of Kingsbury ETJ.
Well, what's in it for them if they do?
Well, I told Robyn about it, and she was like, give me the paper. She, they don't want to be in Kingsbury.
Yeah, she's doing her part.
I told Lupa, she's like, "Oh, okay", so you know, like, do you...
Lupa, I've talked to before, she was my interest.
But all of that is irrelevant now, because the law has changed. Simple signature, this is a simple process, guess what, she's definitely going to sign one, it's like her to get out of Kingsbury.
Well, I think at the time, her brother was the city councilor of Sagan, so that was...
Does anyone have a clear, simple answer for what, what encumbers me if I'm in Sagan's ETJ? What can they do to me? What do they regulate?
I mean, they can do a lot, actually.
Not right now, but as soon as they decide that...
ETJ's regulated, it can be regulated by a city.
If they want to.
Yeah, oh, yeah, if they want to.
Yeah, right. And so they're not at this moment, but they could at any moment.
Yeah, and that includes regulating what animals you have, what buildings you put up.
That's why we sit in our position.
There's all kinds of regulations that happen.
What sidewalks you have, where your fence is in relation to the sidewalk.
Right.
Blah, 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 blah.
So, I mean, that's another warning that I will issue to everybody in this room, is when we incorporated Kingsbury, we said, "We are going to create a city that is exactly like the countryside. We are not a city, we are protecting you from other cities. So if we start talking zoning, especially zoning of people's agricultural, or big tracts of land that they use for a lot of stuff, I think we're going to be in trouble."
Well, you know, I was thinking about, because Elena's last, I was emailing, or your agenda for tonight, whatever. My internet's out of commission right now. But I guess it was your email. And I was thinking about what you said, and I said, "Hmm." So, you know, we are, we were formed as a liberty city. Our sole purpose was just to protect us from Sagan. So Sagan could not move into our area and throw their ETJ around us. And then they couldn't, eventually couldn't incorporate us either, into their city. And we were successful at accomplishing that, at least for a large part, for some of us. So it didn't get carried away, but now this year's, so that's been removed, yeah. But the things that some people might like about the lifestyle out here is changing because of the economy, and because people need a place to live. And this is some kind of nice, I guess, I think it's nice. But that's nothing that we could, most of it's regulated by the state or the county, or the state, eventually, really. And if we were a home rule city, we could have an iron fist like Sagan, San Antonio and Austin. But we're not, that's not us. And I don't know, how do you change people's opinion about how they keep up the place where they live? You just, it's a social, like I said, it's a social thing, it's an attitude. I said, "How come you don't pick up your trash? Everybody else, nobody else in the neighborhood picks up, leaves their trash laying out, you know?" Like, "Well, I don't want to, I don't want to". Okay. Hopefully, they'll eventually get, you know, I need to... They just, social pressure is an immense pressure. It can bring a lot of change about voluntarily.
So do we want to do anything regarding item number four?
I mean, I'd like to come on Tuesday, I couldn't come last, the last meeting, because I have...
I want to know what these people think, because they're the ones that I'm looking to.
I guess we gave our whole opinion, we cannot go ahead, it makes no sense to go ahead if we don't do changes.
Okay.
It is, the cat is biding its own tail.
Well, I guess then, at the next Kingsbury, if we can make it, then we'll, then we'll kind of decide whether to continue or not.
We would like your feedback on the draft, and we would also like your feedback on what the commission's goal is, and the reiteration of what the commission's goal is with a P&amp;Z committee.
Okay, so you're going to send everybody another copy of this?
I can, but it is on, it is on the, it's also on the discussion board.
Message board, yeah. So we're going to discuss what our, our mission as a commission is?
At that time, sure.
Before the meeting.
Okay.
Uh, no?
You, now?
No, on the message board.
Sure.
And y'all can comment too. If you can't comment on, well, you can't comment on Kingsbury, but you can comment on the general message board, or the zoning and planning message board.
I think it's actually a really important thing to do, I mean, how long have we been a city now? Like, since 2015, so going on 2014, so almost 10. Okay, so, well, eight years, I mean, long enough. And maybe we should look at ourselves and say, "Okay, this is our mission", because what, the way we formed was, we don't want to be a city.
Yeah.
We want to stay country. We had to form a city to stay country because of all this craziness going on. But now that this new thing, September 1st thing, you know, is giving a lot of people freedom, I think it's probably good for us to look at ourselves and say, what are we gonna offer to people? Why would, why do people need to come to Kingsbury now when they don't have to be anywhere? They could just be in the county and do exactly what we set out to do in the first place that when we incorporated Kingsbury.
I don't want to, I don't want to encourage people to come out here, I'll just, because I don't feel like I need.
More people.
I mean, I don't.
I don't need more people.
I'm not saying I don't want people to stay away, but I don't feel like I need to go out and bring in people or a gas station or a convenience store.
I got a brewery coming in next to me on the property next to me.
Yeah.
It's not, it's, you, you don't have to invite them, Brian.
I know. I know, that's right. They're coming anyway, that's the only, the thing.
People keep reading.
I think the biggest thing we have going for us is that we offer, as a city, we offer absolutely nothing.
No, we don't offer any services.
We offer, we offer what we formed for, was protection from, uh, another city's ETJ. Or possible annexation.
I mean, at, at this point, yeah, I mean, at some point, maybe we do want to offer.
I'll never, I'll never ask to offer anything for this, no, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm very self-reliant and I, I don't, to the government, I said, no. Absolutely, whatever the, whatever the question is, to the government, I said, no. That's, that's, that's my personal, that's the way I, that's the way I am.
I'd like to offer rainwater. I'd like to offer rainwater that can be put in five gallon bottles and public well. But yeah, I agree, I agree, as far as the zoning goes.
Since we are collecting sales tax and this people's, you know, I mean, yeah, if we can put it in some public use for an emergency situation like that, that's probably fine.
All right, any more discussion on item number four?
Nope, eh.
All right. All right, no workshop, we'll just, uh, be prepared for the next planning and zoning committee. Item number five, discuss and consider road closure and special event permits. Why, I'm not sure why this has your name on it, but, Allison, I'm discussing.
Well, she's.
Probably because of.
Yeah, two upcoming trunk or treat events on Railway Street, October 28th and October 1st.
I think that October 28th is wrong, I think it's the 29th.
I think it's the 29th, right, correct.
The 29th, and I have my permit application.
Yeah, she did.
And do we need to go ahead and do a permit for Fall Harvest now?
You know, um, I think it would be a, a good thing to do, I don't know.
I think so.
Uh, oh, and, and back to just other stuff, here's checkers first.
Thank you.
Um, nothing too much, uh, there's, there is, uh, a, two items on here for WIC's payout, which is, uh, one was my test of the paywall on the, on the website for a booth. Uh, they, they take out a dollar thirty-two, I think, for the, for, I think, uh, for the PayPal thing, yeah.
Transact.
Yeah, and then there was, uh, two more that, uh, the sixty-seven thirty-six, that was for two more bits, um, from other people, so thirty-five. And so this, we need to cut a check for the habitable spaces.
Oh, for the, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, well, no, for the, for these, these payouts, because this was money for habitable spaces for booth fees, so. Um, it's just the paywall goes to our, our bank, yeah. Um, the only other thing, there were still another couple of domain renewals, kingsburytexas.com. We have that one so that, because most people will put a dot com, so kingsburytexas.com automatically redirects you to kingsburytexas.org, which is our main website, so, um, um, and we got our sales tax for August and, and then, so the line here, uh, between September 29th, October 2nd, that's when our, uh, new fiscal year took, uh, took effect. So, uh, we are now in that, in that.
I'm sorry, what, what item number are we on?
I'm sorry, I went back, I went back to, uh, announcements, I usually do a check report and announcements, so I was just kind of going back to, to that, because I had them sitting here whilst I was going to go to something else, I'm like, ah, forgot, I forgot check report, so. Other than that, not too much there, so, uh, I did, in anticipation of all this, I did also one, because I didn't catch her when she was there, uh, permit for Wanda McGary, McGary, she's the one that is, uh, in charge of the trunk or treat on the 31st, so, uh, these are the.
This one is the chief.
Huh?
This one is.
This one is the 29th, and this is one for the 31st, yes. Um, I'll be there for both, and then, um, so we're asking, I believe, both are asking for, um, roadblock for safety of, of, uh, the participants there, um, so, uh, one, okay, so let's, 20, 29th, so.
Online, I have between 25 and 50 jeeps coming from the Raleigh County Jeep Club, and I think it would just be safer for the kids just to have it closed.
That's a lot of jeeps.
How many?
How many jeeps was there?
Yeah.
Twenty, what?
Forty-five or fifty?
Are they bringing chocolate? Any of them bringing chocolate?
Lots of chocolate.
I'll be there.
I'm gonna dress up.
If necessary.
So, her, yeah, so, uh, on, on her item here, uh, uh, traffic control parking plan was a roadblock from 668 to 680 railway, so that's in front of, from, uh, yes, from Circle 2 down to the.
From the old store.
Yeah. You know, I don't know if I have an extra one here, but yeah.
Okay, between, before the store, after the store.
Put that on, um, the website too, I haven't done that yet.
Yes.
Um, security plan, it's like request sheriff, so this is something I think, I think the constable came by last time and just did a, did an impromptu kind of road closure.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we didn't expect as many participants as we did, so now we need to just request that upfront. Uh, they'll be very glad to do it. Emergency medical plan, nine-one-one. Uh, waste management plan.
My doctor's needed.
Yeah, if it's needed. Uh, insurance provider, none, and, uh, this is from October 29th, from 4:00 PM until the county runs out. Um, this one for the Halloween evening, uh, trunk or treat, um, uh, again decorated vehicles, uh, October 31st, 5:30 to 8:00, expected attendance, hard to say, 25 to 50, um, uh, partial to, to full road closure, you know, depending on the, uh, participation there, it's hard to say. Um, we put out some cones and have like a, you know, one edge maybe, if with the number of vehicles gets big enough, close just that one portion there, again, on the same area. Uh, request sheriff deputies, emergency plan, nine-one-one, waste, waste management, none, insurance none. So, um, these are, uh, requests we can approve or not.
I move that we approve both the requests.
All right. So, I guess that was a, a motion and a second, all approve, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All right. Um, item number six, discuss and consider HB 2027, the so-called super preemption bill. This is, uh, I don't know.
Yeah, that's, uh.
It's anything from Sam and he's, he's out right now, so I guess we'll table this, uh, Jessica, until. Um, move on? Okay, all right. Item number seven, discuss and consider citywide rainwater collection update. Tyler, do you have an update on?
I do not.
Any, anything new?
I was, uh, I was under the impression that, um, there was more interest in procuring property and putting a well on it. Um, so I, I stopped.
Procuring property, putting a well on it?
Mm-hmm, for the city, at the last meeting.
It's amazing, I didn't, I didn't intend to that negate rainwater collection.
Okay.
I mean, if that's what you were thinking.
Yeah.
That's not what I was ever.
Yeah, I didn't see those as being mutually exclusive, but I could be wrong. But yeah, I, I didn't see those as mutually exclusive.
Okay. Um, okay, well, uh, then I will proceed with getting a meeting with Sam to find out what, what he's come up with.
Awesome.
And I think we should pursue, uh, there's grant money, you know, that he's got the connection with the guy who came and talked to us ages ago with the water.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I can't remember what his name is. But, um, that guy's really good at getting millions of dollars for, he's got a couple million for El Paso to do their water system, so, and, um, they do want to work with us when we spoke to them years ago, but it's worth pursuing, um, and that's.
Would Sam then?
Sam, he's a good friend of Sam's and, um.
Same, interns working down there.
Yeah, it's been a while since he came in and talked to us, we didn't really have any projects to, for him, I think I mentioned this in passing a while back, but yeah, I'm glad we're bringing it up at an official meeting so that we can kind of get on it, because we probably should officially reach out to him as the city, and I cannot remember what his name is.
Okay.
Or the, um, actually, maybe I'll just text.
Is it the Three Rivers or?
Three River, yeah, was it?
The Three Rivers Community, I think.
Yeah.
Down in that area, anyway.
Yeah, it was, uh.
That's where Sam would work down there.
Yes, yeah, and they have a whole business writing grants for water for cities, so, they seem like the people to ask.
Yeah, I think rainwater collection is like the future of water in this, in this state, at least, not this country. Whatever they do, it, it makes no sense not to do that. If I was moving out here and I was, well, young as I was when I moved out of here, I would have rainwater collection in my house. I would have.
Um.
I know with our rainwater collection at home, we got 1,000 gallons.
That's nice.
Wow. Uh. Okay. Um, so that one, we need to.
I'm texting right now.
Get that on the next agenda, awesome.
Okay.
Item number eight.
Number six?
Huh?
No, Sam's out.
Sam is out, so.
He's dealing that.
Yeah, so we tabled that for, for the next agenda. Um, item number eight, discuss and consider, discussion of SB 2038. Um, I have two more to submit, well, it's a little bit more complicated, but I have two more to submit. Uh, this is the, uh, SB 2038, of course, is the, uh, how to be removed from an ETJ. I did, submitted Kathy Medlands and Denise Imhoff over here, um, and they were both, and you can watch the video of, uh, Sagan City Council. Oh, uh, uh, Mr. Quittner did not, uh, present those, um, and there were no others on their, except, on their agenda, except for Kingsbury.
I think it would be probably wise for all of us to submit, I mean, you've already done it, but you and I haven't, or I don't know if you have, but.
I'm not in their ETJ.
Oh, lucky, well, I am, um, but I'm just, uh, uh, imagining if they get a flood of these things, they might get a little bit meaner about it.
No, I don't think so.
They don't have a choice.
I know, well, I thought, all right.
Fire department needs to.
Yes, you're right, I'll get on Shane about that, yeah.
Yeah, pretty much everybody on this side of.
Yeah.
Of, uh, you know, in the original Sagan ETJ.
Tyler and I submitted?
Yes, you have.
Okay.
And I have not, I was trying to do that Friday and I was, I was at the, my plant, so I didn't get there and I was going to try and get there today, that didn't happen again today, and, but, uh, their next, uh, city council is tomorrow, so that wouldn't have gotten on their next agenda anyway. So darn it, I have one agenda of theirs that doesn't have something from Kingsbury to remove from the ETJ, but I have it all ready to go, just to, to turn it in.
Cool.
Has anyone spoken to Brad?
Yes.
And?
He, I walked him through the, uh, petition process on how to get all that correct way to fill it out, or, you know, the way it worked, and then, um, and so he was gonna get that. I don't know if he was able to submit those.
Yeah.
Um, and, yeah, and, uh, just to make sure that he submits it, has them mark it received, they're, they're better now at marking it, received it, the first one was like.
Yeah.
Work, work, didn't really understand the process, all, you know, that it was a thing that was gonna be happening.
Yeah.
Um, Ms. Centeno, the, the city planner, uh, submit, uh, uh, presented the Kathy Medlin and Denise Imhoffs at the last meeting, and she just basically said, uh, for each one that these are, uh, the correct paperwork was filed, uh, they were the, all landowners were on the petition, um, we have no choice but to, to grant.
I want to come back again, because is there an easy way to, for a landowner to do this? Simple instruction? Or is it a little more complicated?
I think, I, I, after talking with, with Robin, uh, uh, Cresta, uh, that the, uh, petition could be made a little simpler. It, it's a little confusing, that's why, again, I wanted to go through the process first.
Yeah.
And make sure, you know, that everything, that everything was done correctly, but yeah, I think that the petition is a little, uh, uh, difficult to, to understand exactly what, what to do there, so I think that petition, and Art is the one that came up with that.
The petition itself.
I think, I think if we were classed.
Ask him to simplify it.
Yeah, ask him to simplify.
Yeah.
Um, the other avenue here, and, um, I keep thinking of things I needed to, should have discussed in announcements. Um, I had a meeting with, uh, Monica De La Cruz's person, uh, she's our US representative, um, and we talked about this very thing, you know, quite, quite extensively. The other avenue, instead of landowner by landowner, is to get a, an election. So you have to get a certain percentage of the, uh, landowners to sign a petition, very much like we incorporated, uh, Sagan would have to pay for the election and we would be the whole, depending on, the whole area would be removed from their ETJ. Um, so that is the other way to do it, instead of piece by piece. Now, I couldn't be part of it because I've already gotten mine out.
Mm-hmm.
Um, uh.
We'd have to have a fifty-one, over 50% of the.
It's.
We'd have two hundred.
Something like that.
Two hundred units.
Yeah, there, uh.
Two hundred, uh, properties.
It is the, uh, in the, in the, uh, local government code, it's section forty-two dot one five one regarding the election. Now, one part in there that plays a part, and you wouldn't think it would, is it has to be five miles from the military installation.
Yeah.
The military, five miles from the touch and go field comes right up to, like, yeah, yeah, ten and basically 2438, Sagan's Outer Loop.
Yeah.
Um, so.
That's the same, that's the same procedure for a city to annex.
No, to incorporate.
To, to annex also.
Oh, like a group of landlords?
Yeah, if they wanted, they wanted a petition, the city to, uh.
To be annexed?
To be annexed.
Maybe, uh, like a group.
Yeah.
But this is like on a petition, like when we incorporated, like signing the petition.
And you have those down at your store?
I have the petitions for individual landlords.
But I don't want her to have to try to do everybody that walks in the door.
Yeah.
That's.
That's kind of what I'm doing, I mean.
I know, but I don't want you to have to do that.
Well.
I mean, one thing is that Shirley, like, pulled up a map of our property and screenshotted it, so, because they need a map of, and then, you know, there are a few things that are probably just gonna be confusing for people. I don't know, I mean, some people are gonna be able to find their deed easily, but Shirley pulled ours up and made copies of it for us, so.
So, yeah, here's the.
I don't know, um.
So, uh, all that's required is your meets and bounds or lot and block. So, all it's required is your meets and bounds or lot and block, like downtown is like a lot and block. Like, because it's on the original plat, and then a little map, and so I just.
Yeah, I mean, it's not a crazy amount of stuff.
It's just the present district, yeah.
Yes, and then I, I did some little coloring on it. Oh, um, property and block, and then that, so this is two, two properties. But yeah, again, the law only took effect September first, so we've only been, you know, six weeks in, so. And then I got contacted by Lake Hills in Banderas County. They're wanting to incorporate because of encroachment, and I'm like, well, yeah, we can, they wanted to talk.
You mean, do they even need to do it anymore?
Who's encroaching? Yeah, I mean, how can the city, there's no involuntary annexation anymore, except by that petition and invoke, and if it passes.
Right, I don't know. I, yeah, I think they're, they're, yeah. I mean, certainly, I mean, you look, Saguini is doing voluntary annexations because the landowners will buy a big swath of property. Then they request voluntary annexation so that they can get services.
Well, you don't have to have a big swath to ask for voluntary annex.
No, but that's usually what's happening, is, you know, so they can put a.
I said, big swath out here, and they can ask for utilities, and we don't have any, excuse me.
No, but I mean, that's what, that's probably what's happening in, because it's, yeah. Um, so, um, if I get a chance to run in and run back tomorrow in between meetings, I will deliver yours, but, so. Either way, it will be on the next, Saguini has, uh, city council meetings on the second and fourth Tuesday of each month. So, it won't be there tomorrow, but it will be there.
In a couple of weeks.
Yeah, in a couple of weeks.
Okay.
It will be there in a couple of weeks.
Cool.
Along with the other ones that I gather up on that. So, um, again, I told I would like to, I would like to do an election and just get a, get a swath. But.
Still gonna be contacted every?
Yeah, it would be.
Give them, swear to come vote for it.
Mm-hmm, yep. So, um.
Man, yeah.
Yep. Alright, I don't know that I have anything else more on that. Um. Item number nine, discussing consider, train crossing Gandersley Road. I've been trying to get ahold of Raquel. Espinosa, no, she's not. I did send her an email today. I know, I don't have anything other than, I'm waiting for a response from.
You can't be more depressed by listening to.
He's got.
He goes, I'm gonna go eat food, dude.
Yes. He's got cannolis or something. Other than I did, uh, she, on her voicemail, she says, the best way to get ahold of me is to send me an email at blah, 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 so just from the website, you know. Said, hey, here, here's the problem. I need to talk to you about what our options are, what, I mean, here's what's happening, here's seven mile round trip to get to the other side, especially if you have a private drive, you know. And then, um, it is, uh, what, what our options could be and what near and long-term solutions may exist for this. The other thing, and I have not drafted the letter yet, we, we talked about this, oh, with the, uh, my, uh, Representative De La Cruz's, uh, person is to contact our state senator, and so I will draft a letter to Zaffarini. I, you know, I don't know if any of this will do it yet, but, you know, at least I can say I tried.
Yeah.
So. I'm gonna try.
That's, yes ma'am.
Alright, item number ten, seek a grant to retrofit municipal buildings with high efficiency, high efficiency LED lighting.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of close the book on this. I, I did apply, and then a couple of days later, I got an email response from my email that I had written before I finished applying, saying like, hey, this is the situation, would this apply or not, and they said, no, not apply. So, I, I don't expect to hear from them. I think that's done.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, item number eleven, discussing consider, CLFRF money designation, this is Allison Heinecker.
Alright, so I guess we're doing, trying to figure out the paper street situation, and then we're gonna write it all down, write down what we're doing?
Uh, I asked about, uh, Ann's old house. I, I thought nobody was using that, but I thought it was in such bad shape that nobody was using it.
Ann's old house? I thought, isn't Craig still in there?
No, his, uh, one of his sons. Oh, no, one of Curtis' sons. Craig's in there, Charles or whatever back there. But no, one of Curtis' sons is living, living in there. I thought nobody was, was using it. That would be a great spot.
Where is it?
Right next door, this, this house right here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Right on the other side of the apartment, right here. So, um, I still would really like to see that. I mean, that probably wouldn't be enough for, you know, well, that's the optimal solution is to have that. But, still looking. I did do some more, I did talk to somebody else about the paper street. Who did I talk to? It's been a while. It's been a while.
Any idea?
I'll have to go back to that, yeah.
A good feeling or a bad feeling, or?
Uh, not necessarily good, good, um.
So it seems like it's not gonna be possible to get the one.
Well, well, right now, it's in the Saguini ETJ.
And there's no way of releasing it?
No, because nobody owns it. That's for the rest of them. Saguini would have to release it.
Who owns it? Nobody owns it.
Nobody.
Craig doesn't own it?
It's in the Saguini ETJ.
So Saguini would have to release it for us, was there probably?
There not.
Somebody has to own it.
It's a paper street. It's a street, nobody owns a street.
Can someone own it?
No.
How would we obtain it? Obtain it? And if we did obtain it, what would we obtain? Nothing?
We would obtain it, but it doesn't, it's not owned by anybody, it's owned by the state of Texas.
We could obtain it, but the current overseer of that property is not the county. The county is good with it. But the current overseer is the city of Saguini, because it's in their ETJ.
So they have the deed?
There is no deed.
There's.
Oh, oh, it's a street.
There.
It's a paper street. It never existed.
They, they can't, they don't own it. They can regulate it with whatever they can regulate an ETJ.
Right.
But they could probably also try to claim it.
We would have to do a quick claim. I, I did recently do a quick claim deed for the property back there with the San Marcos Street on it. We did a quick claim deed, not quick claim. Deed without warranty.
Yes.
On that. We did that because that property was in the Kingsbury city limits. Now, you know, there's a, they've gone back on their decisions, and so now it's in the Saguini ETJ again. So.
Well, how did it, how did they decide it was in Kingsbury?
Because at the time, this was before the county came back and said, no, or Saguini and the county came back and said, no, we don't think, you know, none of these voluntary annexations in the Saguini ETJ were valid. So, at the time, it was in the Kingsbury city limits. Now, it's in the Saguini ETJ. So, we have limited.
Back to square one. So if we cannot find land to put this well on, what are we gonna do?
Oh, about the funds?
Yeah, I mean, we have a rainwater proposal.
We still have some time left, but, you know, we need to, yeah, you're right, I mean, we have to.
I think at some point, we should just make a decision if we, if we can't secure any land. It'd be great to secure land, but, like, yeah. If we can't secure anything for free.
Yeah.
Then maybe we figure out a plan B.
Yeah.
The property surrounding the, the, the paper streets, is it all in Kingsbury now?
No, it's in the Saguini ETJ.
Well, why aren't the landowners petition to be released from Saguini's ETJ?
They can.
They don't know that they can.
They don't know that they can. Oh, I'm sure they do.
Where is this paper street?
Right next to Will's downtown house, you know, that.
It's, yeah, Summit Street. Well, there's Summit Street and Guadalupe Street, but Guadalupe Street, so it's, if you're going north on Kingsbury Road, you know, across the tracks and going north, um, the Guadalupe Street and Summit Street both have a component that goes to the right.
Okay.
But there isn't, never has been any street there. So.
I'm still, I'm still grappling with the idea. Saguini, is there a Saguini's, that property is in Saguini's ETJ?
Yes.
There is no owner to that property, so Saguini can regulate it in terms of being an ETJ.
Correct.
They can regulate it.
Correct.
But they can't own it.
No, which is like we don't.
We have a capability of owning it?
No, we don't own any streets either.
Why, no, why can't we?
Jackson Road or.
Why can't we?
Do a quick claim.
On that?
We don't, with, there's no, we don't have any jurisdiction over that. It's in the Saguini ETJ.
No, we're not looking for jurisdiction, no, we're looking to own it.
So, could a private person own it, for instance? Like, if, could I go and say, I want to file a quick claim for this street? And then if all the neighbors agreed, could I own it then, for instance? Is, is the problem that we're, it's.
That's the way that the county attorney has explained it, like, you could go file a quick claim on the Alamo.
So why don't, what, somebody, why doesn't somebody file a quick claim on it and then give it to the city? Yeah.
Yeah, well, they couldn't, I guess they could give it to the city. It's not touching any city city limits.
Unless.
I was gonna say, if we surrounded it, if Kingsbury.
And then have it removed from the ETJ.
If Kingsbury was surrounding it, and it's in Saguini's little piece of ETJ, it's not touching it.
It's Kingsbury, it's surrounded by Saguini ETJ.
Right now, it's partially surrounded.
It's surrounded by Saguini ETJ.
Completely?
Yeah.
With all those people, Lefoy is.
Sure, yeah.
He's still in the ETJ?
He's in Saguini ETJ.
I was gonna say, if we had all those people, we're.
So this is coming back to the, yeah, getting people motivated.
Kingsbury, or they were unincorporated county, they could become, they could petition Kingsbury to be part of Kingsbury if they wanted to, whatever.
Only if they're for voluntary annexation?
Yeah.
If they're touching.
If they're touching, that's right.
So like, I removed mine from the Saguini ETJ, but it's still not city Kingsbury.
But still, but still.
Although I'm paying city Kingsbury some tax.
If, uh, if it is not contiguous with Saguini's ETJ, or Saguini, if it was not, if they just withdrew from Saguini's ETJ, become unincorporated, well, that, these, the landowners surround them, do not petition Kingsbury, they just unincorporate it, okay? I don't understand. I don't, even if it was unincorporated.
It's a new law, so it is kind of weird.
Even if it was unincorporated, even if it wasn't ETJ, if it's unincorporated, could Saguini, uh, I mean, Kingsbury, uh, claim it?
Not unless it's touching.
But how would you, how would you unincorporate it? You're not the landowner.
If he were to convince everybody who surrounds that.
That property became unincorporated.
And then joined Kingsbury.
Ask to be withdrawn from Saguini's ETJ, and it was granted, so now Saguini does not touch it in any size whatsoever.
Yeah, I, I would guess, yeah, maybe.
Then, then what would be the issue then?
I mean, so would it need to be contiguous with Kingsbury property at that point?
Yeah, but if, if like Will put his house over there in Kingsbury, I think that could work if it's across the street from all your stuff, which is incorporated into Kingsbury, right?
No, it's in the Saguini ETJ.
Oh, so the post office is?
Saguini ETJ. Well, no, I, I, I D E T J'd it.
Yeah.
Okay, so Will could take his property.
You mean voluntary annex it? No, because it's not touching Kingsbury city limits.
So all that voluntary annex we did downtown is moved out.
Yeah.
What's this one, is this?
Wait, wait, how did we annex it? How did we voluntary annex it if we weren't touching Kingsbury?
We were at the time.
We worked?
We were at the time. Then, then we worked, I worked with Mayor Dodgen to say, okay, all of these properties have requested voluntary annexation. She said, okay, yeah, what do we want with Kingsbury? I'm good with all this. We did voluntary annexations, right?
Yes.
We did, okay, all the properties go cross, right across from here, remember Cecil and, you know, Nelda and all them.
They're not actually in Kingsbury now?
No, they're not.
According to the county.
So.
Wow, this is new to me.
This is good. Why do we need the lawsuit? Why do we need any of this? We're good. You, you can do all these voluntary annexations. Then I tried to get maps from the county and the new engineer at the county, Douglas Burnside. He said, no, you need approval from Saguini to get your maps.
You had approval for release?
I, so I asked Mayor Dodgen. I said, hey, can you please let them know that we agreed that these voluntary annexations were okay? And she came back with this, no, we can't really approve that because that would put Saguini in a precarious position.
So we need to all pull out of, so basically.
So the map that's given to me by Burnside, the engineer for the county, shows that original Saguini ETJ, every property that was voluntary annex, including the one that we're sitting on right now, is, is, uh, what is the wording they used? Is, uh.
Not valid?
Yeah, not suspect, but yeah, is in question, in question.
When did you find this out? Recently?
Three months, four months ago.
Yeah, this is the first I'm hearing of it. Wow, that's kind of major news. We need to tell people on eleven oh four, though, like, I don't think any of these people realize they're not in Kingsbury. It's pretty major.
Yeah, that's, uh.
Yeah.
To be the focus of community involvement right there.
Correct, yeah. I know it was, I know it was before, I know it was in July, I guess. Because I confronted Judge Ketcher, and, uh.
Wow, that's the first I'm hearing of this.
Healthy discussion.
No, I heard some of this, but I don't think I understood.
Yeah.
Wow, so I think actually this is probably, can we put this on an agenda for the next meeting that maybe we need to discuss sending out some kind of mailer to everybody in this zip code and say, are you, what are you, letting them realize that they can get out of Saguini? Also, that they, that their voluntary annexes gotten, are no longer valid because of all this, and if they want to be in Kingsbury again, they'll have to remove, I mean, we should explain this to people.
We need a mailing list for everybody that was annexed.
Okay.
Voluntarily annexed, not, not, uh, and, but was in Saguini's ETJ at the time. You need a mailing list for each of those people, all of those people, and contact them individually, and just tell them the law of state, Texas has changed. No longer can a city annex you or put you into your ETJ, they're each, without your consent. However, you, this was all done before the law took place, so now.
And I knew the law was coming, so that's why I didn't, I'm like, okay, then all we have to do is wait for the law to take effect. Then we can D E T J all these properties, and then I, I, in, in my mind, the city of Kingsbury says, okay, our original voluntary annexations are now grandfathered in.
You have to ask Sam about that. You have to ask Sam about that, I'm thinking easier just to reannex.
I mean, there is no precedent for.
Reannex, but that's, 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 part of the issue too, is when you tell somebody that, okay, you now need to withdraw from Seguin's ETJ. And Seguin will be glad to let you do that, and then, and there's contention now, there's a question of whether your petition that we granted to be part of Kingsbury is valid or not, so. Just resubmit.
I think what we.
Or we can just redate it and do another one, you sign it, we'll sign it, and it'll be done.
I, I think it sounds like we need to.
No, we have to go through public hearings, we have to go through legal notices in the paper, we have to go through that whole thing again.
I think we need to have Sam in on this too, to just find out what he thinks about all of this. And then maybe a workshop to draft some kind of card, or if we can come up with the verbiage next meeting, I can put a card together that we just get from him to. But, yeah, we need to talk to Sam first.
Cause like, you know. You know, if I was in, if I was in Seguin's ETJ.
Well, I know Sam knows about all this.
So we need an agenda about how to handle.
How we, how we go about.
The new law.
We need, we need to nail down the correction.
Uh, SB, whatever it is, um, to let people know that they need to remove themselves from Seguin.
And we may have people who. We voluntarily annex, uh, who decided that on Seguin's ETJ, they're gonna stay that way.
And how to send a mailer out, I guess.
Which could mark our.
So a mailer regarding this, but also the voluntary, voluntary annexations that were null by the.
Yeah, yeah, we have to figure out how to tell people, that's gonna be really confusing and obnoxious, because they're gonna be like.
That's why.
Well, why should I join Kingsbury again?
Right, that's why.
Okay, I don't know.
Going at the people that I know, I've talked to De, to David Larison about, about the fire station, about his house, about fire station number two. It's just, it's just like voluntary annexation, it's just a, you know, it's a piecemeal getting it done.
Well, it's like it, we were going.
Even if we put out flyers, it'd still be landowner by landowner by landowner.
I know, but I think they need to get something in the mail so they can kind of understand what's going on.
Yeah, even the people that didn't sign up for voluntary annexation.
Yeah, everybody, we could do mass mailing to everybody in the zip code, they should all know that they can get a Seguin ETJ.
People that aren't necessarily interested in being part of Kingsbury, aren't interested in being part of Seguin either.
Yeah.
So, you've, it's possible that there are, you know, some of my neighbors might even be interested in not being a part of any city.
Yeah.
You know, um, so I, I think if there's any kind of flyer or mailer, it shouldn't just go to the people that have annexed, I think it should go to everyone in the zip code.
Yeah, plus that helps our cost too, cause we want Seguin off our back door, so if we can push them all the way back to wherever, and they get, they don't have any ETJ anymore, if what, nobody wants to be in your stupid city.
And after that's done, the EDA or NDAs, non-legal.
Yeah.
They request to be not part of the ETJ, or they considered, they're considered already annexed, but they're not annexed.
But they're not.
But they're considered annexed, even though they're not annexed.
But they're not, but they're city limits, but they're not.
So it's like, yeah, so I would request really go from the ETJ, because mine.
I think, I think it'd be worthwhile for us to send out a mailer to our people and just, you know, they can make the decision on their own, and then, we run a risk of them not joining Kingsbury.
I mean, in order to do this, we would probably need to set up a workshop in order to do it.
Yeah, uh, but, but I think we should probably discuss next meeting with Sam and just see what he says, and then, yeah, we're probably gonna have to do a workshop to draft the, the wording.
It seems like a hard topic to me, the name.
We're on, we're on the verge of.
Yeah.
Disassembling our city.
I know, man.
But, I mean, I'm almost like, well, yeah. Do we even need this anymore? But, no, I don't trust, don't trust government, so this is at least, at least a little bit of a fail-safe system here. I, I just.
Alright, so we'll wait for our next meeting, I'll continue to contact people and get out of their, and submit their. Create their packets and do their paperwork and submit their deals to them.
I'm gonna come down tomorrow, is there a time when you're in the, I know we're not allowed to, but.
I know.
Often at the store, it's legal, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so is there a time you're down there to help?
I'm usually down there after five.
Okay, um, I will come down tomorrow, and I actually have our meets and bounds from the land that we, you know, have.
I have it also.
Okay, cool, alright, well, shit, man.
Yeah. Item number twelve, discuss and consider possible water leak at Kingsbury Road and US Highway ninety.
Yeah, so Beverly brought this up, and I sent it to Jessica.
I also got a message about it on the Facebook page, but it seems like a number of people are talking.
Yes, all through the summer, there has been, well, filled with water right along the Crystal Clear pipeline. And I guess your neighbors are getting exorbitant bills, so they're charging people for all this water.
Why would they charge if it's on the other side of the meters?
Well, it's just leaking out and they're seeing water.
If it's not going through your meter, how do they charge you?
Yeah.
Well, maybe they're just getting.
I heard something about Robin, but I wasn't there for that conversation, right, it was Robin was saying?
It was just a little text, yeah, Tyler was saying that Robin was complaining, but who knows, maybe that's a different situation, but there is a possible, there is a possible water leak.
Yeah, it has to be on your side of the meter, yeah. Uh, well.
I mean, you know, I've heard that, I mean, I think you told me Shirley that, like, what, a third of the bill was, uh, from, no, they lose a third of their, lose water.
They know, they. They lose a third of their water.
Yeah.
To leaks.
Well, we must be paying for it one way or another.
Well, this is destroying the road too.
Yeah, that's, that's, I mean, I've reported.
So we should probably reach out to them, yeah.
Yeah, I've reported, so, oh, they have on their website, report a leak. So, I'll do that this evening, I'll go report a leak.
I mean, also, I think it might be wise to write as the mayor and say, uh, you're destroying our streets, we can sue you if you don't get this thing handled immediately.
It's in Seguin ETJ.
It's right in front of, uh, the tire shop, it's right on that corner.
Right there at the corner of Geno's, it's right there at the stop sign.
Oh, hell.
Yeah, you can look over there, and it's like a little.
There's like a bunch of frogs living in it.
Yeah.
Opportunist frogs. I live in a pothole on the side of the road.
Okay, so it's a state, state maintenance issue.
I think it is state.
So, oh, text doc and say.
Well, I'm gonna just, well, Crystal Clear will fill it, I think.
Well, they gotta stop the leak, they can fill it all they want to.
Well, they can stop the leak if they kind of feel like it. You know, if it's not.
Who can exonerate the water company?
Um, I'm looking at the water company alerts. I know they have a, take a moment to think about it, they have a, a deal on here.
I don't know that it's their leak, it's Geno's leak, I don't know.
Yeah, Geno has a spring inside.
It's on, it's, like I said, it's out there by the stop sign, so I don't think it's on his property.
It's kinda in the road.
Oh, and I've had a leak that, when I finally found it, where it was leaking from, it was like almost a hundred fifty feet from where the pipe was broken. That's where it surfaced, I mean, I dug a big hole, and it said, there was no, nothing there, perfect, beautiful pipe, where's it coming from? Kept going and going and going, a hundred fifty feet later, I found it.
Well, I'm digging in this soil.
Yes, that's, I put it in the line one year, it was only twelve inches deep this time.
Hot water.
Yeah.
Alright, oh, so I will put in a request this evening for repair, and we'll see, you know, if it's not gushing.
I mean, it has been expanding, it made its way from being like one puddle to three.
Okay.
And has been a puddle for months?
Uh, all through the summer, evidently, Beverly's been watching it, she's like, as dry as it was, all, there's still, always water in there.
Right, uh, last time, is adjourned.
Alright, well, damn, man, so that means that my, my property's in Kingsbury or?
Are we out there?
No, Seguin is adjourned.
Okay, so just the downtown.
Thanks, y'all, adjourned. Downtown, boy.
So, everybody who got annexed ever, any.